All right, good evening. It's seven o'clock, August 31st, 2023. Planning and zoning commission meeting has started. We are going to fast track to item 3F, as it seems most of the people are here for that. So we will start with the citizen comments. Uh, we have, uh, first, Andre Batit. Oh, sorry. Yeah, that's right. Let me, I need to open up for a public hearing. On item 3F, uh, hold a public hearing to consider action or recommendation for the Reed Ranch zoning concept scheme, changing the zoning for 24.04 acres out of the Nancy Blake survey from P2 rural to a planned development district, or PDD, with a P4 mix-based zoning as shown on attachment two, located at 615 West Highway 71 within the city limits of Bastrop. Yes, if you can get a presentation. Sorry. Thank you.
Hopefully this answers some of the questions as we move through, and the applicant is here for a presentation as necessary. So this is the area, the location map, the area known as Reed Ranch. Uh, it is west of Jessica and north of 71 and of Blakey. The zoning and concept plan has what we're calling genuinely B3 Lite. It did attempt to meet all of the underlying base zoning in the P4 zone, with some exceptions regarding the public streets, and we will go through, um, we'll go through that here in a second. The, um, the, I think the item that folks are here in at concern with is the connection onto Jessica. So if staff would please bring up larger map B. Nope. One, next one. It's the one that shows the two developments right next to each other. Nope. That one. So Reed Ranch is, uh, this segment, I don't know if you can zoom into that.
Can we zoom in on that, please?
Yes, into that area. And I have the map available in the back for inspection by the public if they'd like to do that. So, um, both of these are PDDs being presented tonight, and we'll talk through each of them individually. But we skipped over to Reed Ranch to address the comments that the residents have. The master transportation plan calls for Blakey to be completed and make the turn, um, to the south to connect at Old Austin Highway. The city's in the process of acquiring this property from Tech Dot, and you'll know it as the property that's adjacent to the boot barn, uh, the car washes, and that sort of stretch of no man's land that's there. The county and Campo transportation plan has Blakey coming across and connecting at Jessica and making the turn through. Part of the requirement of the development community is they do attempt to meet all of the master transportation plans. That is item number one on the master plan list. It has to meet the comprehensive plan. So this development did just that. They did try to connect and make the connection at Jessica Place. This is the school location, um, and so from a transportation aspect, it does make sense to have circulation around the school. However, we can make that circulation happen with the extension of Blakey all the way to the south and with the turn and the connection at Old Austin Highway. So for the purposes of the developer, it wasn't the developer who's asking for this connection at Jessica. It was an attempt to meet the master transportation plan. Staff has no opposition if this connection goes away. The rest of the development is, um, you can skip to the PowerPoint, starting with Reed Ranch, please. Um, the rest of the development, it is a P2 rural today, meaning, um, larger lot sizes, farms, anything that is newly annexed to the city comes in as rural. What the applicant is requesting today is a P4 zoning, which is a mixed-use, mostly residential apartment complexes, and that is what this developer is proposing today. There are some improvements to Highway 71, um, including a hike and bike trail that is being worked on through this development, as well as the development to the north, Burleson Crossing East, that will also create the connectivity points that, um, folks have been asking for. And as we mentioned before, there's already a path that's being worn out here by the kids who are coming, um, from across the way down into the school. The proposal for all of these in the middle section, this is Settlement Drive that would be extended. This is an existing, um, development, and to the north is Burleson East. They all connect through Settlement. It looks like a street, feels like a street, acts like a street. It has sidewalks like a street. It has trees like a street. It has lighting like a street, but it is developer-maintained. It is not the city's responsibility to maintain that thoroughfare. And that is in, um, that is in one of the PDD documents. Detention Pond is, um, over to the, um, bottom, uh, left of the property, and so the property is draining in that direction, and this is onsite detention. So I'm happy to take any questions, or you can allow the developer to do their presentation, or you can open it up to citizen comments. Yes?
Settlement, Settlement Road, uh, where does that go?
So this actually is Wagon Wheel.
Right.
Um, Settlement is up here, so Burleson East, if you'll go back to that, uh, the map that had them both side by side. Sorry, Rick. Uh, and zoom in, please. So this is, uh...
So it goes back to Blakey?
Yes. This is, um, this is the existing lows. This is Ed Burleson. This development has improvements along Ed Burleson. It connects here. Settlement connects through, and then it, it jogs, and it connects through this development all the way through to connect to Blakey at the other end.
Yeah, thank you.
Will we like to hear from the developer?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Can you skip to the presentation called Reed Ranch?
Good evening, everyone.
Please state your name first.
Charlie Dorsanio with the Drenner Group, uh, representing the applicant. So, and then I got this right here. Let me just get this going. So, you know, Sylvia mentioned a lot of this, but I thought we'd just get a good view of the neighborhood. As you can see, it's an undeveloped 24.04 acre site. Uh, situates everyone, you know, just north of State Highway 71, adjacent to Jessica Place, just west of Bastrop Middle School. It's a P2 rural. We're asking for a PDD, uh, but with a P4 base, uh, place type. Matches a comprehensive plan as a transitional residential, which allows for multifamily.
Could you speak up just a tiny bit? Thank you.
Try to just reach farther here. So what we're looking for is a connected community that's essentially a multifamily development. And to give you more background about the developer, so Holt-Lunsford Commercial is, there's a ton of projects across the state, uh, but remains a family company. You know, I have the developer here with me, Hayden Lunsford. Uh, I have the project team, engineers, architects. If you have any questions for them as well. And so with experience across the state, Holt-Lunsford Commercial builds high-quality, uh, residential developments. This is a recent development in McKinney, Texas. Gives you an idea of the build quality. Some courtyard pictures also build quality. And then if you look to the right, that's kind of a, you know, mock-up of the type of build we're gonna do, uh, or we're proposing to do, which is connected B3-style development. Some more similar projects. So the first thing we did, you know, we looked at what the city of Bastrop wants, and we understood that the B3 code is aimed at connectivity. So Sylvia said it was a B3 Lite, and mostly what we wanted to do is to have it look and feel like a urban fabric, um, with transitional from civic to commercial developments. So, you know, these are goals that are in the B3 code, but as we get and look at the site plan, I think we do a really good job of meeting all of these go, goals of the B3 code, even if we don't, uh, we ask for certain warrants from the code. Okay, so, uh, this is the project, uh, concept zoning scheme, oh, whoops. As discussed, uh...
Can we get a zoom on that, please, Rick?
Might be best to zoom into the left one. Oh, great. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
So I think what we're looking at here are a lot of lots and blocks, uh, with buildings close to the build-to line, which is essentially what the B3 code suggests, uh, is needed. Now, one of the things we were concerned about is, uh, fast traffic moving through the site. Um, you know, we want this to be a safe community for children and families, uh, and especially for, uh, the kids coming across from Bastrop Middle School. So, uh, we tried to work with the code and, uh, meet the street standards as best we could, but as you'll see in certain locations, there are plazas with trees. Those are pedestrian pathways. Uh, the idea is that if any cars are gonna be coming through, uh, we don't want them speeding, and if there's a terminus that's a park, uh, that's something that they won't be doing. So that's where the block, blocks and lots have those terminuses, or there's also, you know, right angles. And so this is kind of confusing, but it's, uh, you know, it's turned to the right, so, um, south is to the left, if that gets you a better image. I think... Sorry. So then if you just look to the right, those are the, those are essentially blocks and lots. They're like 330 by 330, except for the pond lot because of its odd shape, uh, or smaller. So that's what I'm saying. The intent is to meet the B3 code with that connectivity. However, we do, when would request that, uh, all of the inner driveways, including the connection, and I'm, I'm also happy to hear more about the connection if residents don't like it. But the idea is we'd like to maintain, uh, the civic space as well, uh, and the roadways at our cost. That's how we like to do things. Um, it's obviously better for the citizens and that they don't have to worry about it. Um, uh, and so that, that's part of our request as well. So then just some more detail about the street types here. Uh, this is, especially the Jessica Place, very much matches the B3 code. Uh, you know, there're gonna be trees, lights, sidewalks. Happy to answer questions about that as well.
Is this gonna be gated at all?
So right now, we don't have, we don't intend to have any gates. No. It's gonna be, we wanted the connectivity suggested by the code, so, uh, no gates at all. Can go next slide. So with that, I'm here to, happy to answer any questions, uh, about the project. And as, I've also offered my card to, uh, one of the community members who's gonna speak. I'm happy, we're happy to meet with any of them.
I got a question.
Yes.
The question is, any affordable housing in this project here?
So you mean below market rate? So essentially, you know, multifamily, sometimes different, we have different bedroom mixes, but we're not committing to any below-market rate.
You're not committing to any at all?
No.
At this time. Yeah. Uh, I read an article the other day, I thought a little disturbing on my part, where it was basically saying that in 10 years, it's expected that 60% of the people in the United States will be renters rather than homeowners as a trend. Do you find that to be true?
Ooh, I'm, I'm not a housing economist, uh, so I don't, I don't wanna get in trouble, but I... All the information that I've seen is where more housing is permitted to be built. Uh, the supply can moderate the cost of housing. And so, you know, obviously, if you have the money for a down payment for a larger lot, uh, a lot of people are gonna choose that. But I think what the B3 code does, and what we're hoping to do, is, uh, allow people who are starting out, uh, and who are choosing to rent, to take that option. So, you know, that being said, it's gonna be a high, it's gonna be a high-quality product, but...
So have you looked at the demographics of the citizens, the jobs, and just the family types in the city to understand the kind of rates you would have to come in with to make it affordable living, or to where you won't cut out a certain amount of citizens from being able to live there?
So we have not done a rent, I mean, let me just... In coming to a community, we expect to do a study, charge certain rents, right? The market will set the prices, uh, so that's kind of the background here. That being said, we're not opposed to learning more, hearing input.
Right. Uh, I, and I'm just saying that, and I'm sure the reason, because we're not some town, we're not like the Brooks Town in the world or anything, but we're not a town where money's just flowing out for all of the families, right? And we do have a lot of families who need homes. So we wanna make sure we're able to get these people into a home, right? That's affordable, that works for the community, that doesn't push certain people out or exclude certain people.
Of course, and I think that's an important concern. I'm glad that the commission's concerned about that. Like I said, I do, you know, allowing more multifamily especially does, uh, has been proven to slow rent increases, so, um, you know, I think that's one of the reasons the B3 code is so flexible when it comes to construction in some ways, you know. In some ways, it's not.
Well, what we're terribly in need of is affordable housing for first responders, teachers. You're gonna be right next to a school. You know, teachers would love to probably live there and walk over there, you know, for, so it's a consideration of having what we call affordable, you know, which is reduced rate per se. Y'all haven't considered that at all in any of your properties that you do that with there?
We, you know, this is not something anyone's asked so far, and, uh, it's not something I'm ready to say, we're ready to say yes to today. Of course, we consider anything, and I, I would like to speak to my client after this, just to see what the expected rents are here.
Correct.
I'd like to be able to get back to you to say a fireman in Bastrop would be able to afford a one or two-bedroom in these buildings. I ju, I don't have that information yet, though.
So this might be a, uh, uninformed question, but if we do... What about making it gated on that thorough street? You can't do that. Okay, never mind.
No, I mean, we, and I...
So I'll ask a question about, um, Jessica Place. That street there, is that something that has to be tied in, or is it optional to that neighborhood?
I, I might need Sylvia's help, but our understanding was that that was what code wanted. So I, you know, if, if it's not something, it's not something we have to have, you know, for our project. I can say that right now. So if it's something that you recommend not allowing connectivity for, or just being a private street, uh, not a easement to the city, uh, you know, that's something we'd be happy to entertain. I'm not, I'm not...
Right. I, I think it's something that needs to be looked at, because during the school year, in the morning and afternoon, that is just a cluster, if I will say, so...
Well, but, so the...
But we need as much access to everywhere and get out of everywhere as we possibly can. All new roads are welcome here.
We do need to, our egresses, but it's, it gets pretty hectic right there.
Yes, I, I wanna go back to the map, 'cause I wanna, I wanna clarify, uh, the other map.
I think that that is slide...
Yep, if you'll zoom into that. So, part of, um, part of the concern is this connection at Jessica. And, uh, again, part of the PDD process is the applicant has to attempt to meet every transportation plan. That is what they attempted. The transportation master plan calls Blakey out this way and calls Blakey down to the south, connecting at 71, and then connecting at Old Austin Highway. Don't disagree that there will be circulation. I think the neighborhood's concern, because I live right over, and I heard it on Nextdoor, um, the neighborhood's concern is the commercial development cutting through, uh, Wagon Wheel cutting through along Settlement, connecting backup and connecting at Jessica, um, and the traffic that that would place on Jessica, and eventually Schaefer coming back onto Old Austin Highway. The reality of it is, is Blakey is finished, um, you should be able to come down. This development is improving Ed Burleson, is widening Ed Burleson. Um, the 71 improvements that both of these, um, developments are doing will also create greater connectivity. So there will be a position to be able to come down Ed Burleson, Blakey, um, and come all the way down. And so if this connection is an issue, uh, then that is something that the planning commission could make a recommendation to remove, and council could consider. Uh, our position is we have a connection point at Blakey, all the way down to 71. So, uh, not super heartburn on our part.
Right. Yeah, 'cause my, my thoughts are, like, if it's a road there, they will try to take it. Right? We dealt, we dealt, we dealt with that with, um, all the traffic, the big rigs coming through when we were at the highway, when they were driving through town, so...
I will tell you two things. People and water take the path of least resistance. That's a fact. Water finds its own level. People find the less traffic. Period.
Then let's make the recommendation to...
So you can open it up for citizen comments.
All right. I'd like to, you have anything else?
Uh, we wouldn't oppose that, so...
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, we're gonna open it up for citizen comments. All right, so, I was, I was waiting on that. All right. So, uh, up first, we have, um, Ray Matthews. Uh, please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Ray Matthews. Um, I am one of the people, uh, residents at, uh, the Riverside Grove subdivision. Sorry, I'm kinda new to all this city council. I mean, this is my first meeting. Um, born in Austin, been in the Riverside Grove since 2014. I love my small neighborhood. It's a small, single-family neighborhood, um, and I moved away from the city to get into a, a neighborhood. Uh, I, I like our small-town vibe, and I like the atmosphere of this. Um, I want to voice my opposition to raising it to a P4 level. Uh, I do not like, uh, my property is, if you look at that big map right there, I am only one house away from where this would be, Catty Corner, but because I'm not side by side, I did not get a vote, or a slip, or a notification about this meeting, even though I think my property is like 201 feet away from this development. Um, I'm hoping that you would consider my voice and my opinion on this matter, because I can see the lot from my back bedroom window. I sit there and look at the moon and look, stare at the horses. Um, this is gonna have a big impact on me, especially as being a night shift worker working at Tesla. That being said, I, I would like for us to keep this neighborhood a neighborhood and not have that big-city vibe. Having 375 neighbors, Catty Corner for me, is gonna impact the quality of my life, um, and also the vast amount of traffic. I like seeing the kids in the street playing and having, I, I just like, I would be a four, a P3, single-family neighborhood, but I, I'm opposed to the big apartment complexes. Yeah, and I support the teachers. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, up next, we have Kelly Warner.
Good evening. Hi, I'm...
Name and address, please.
Kelly Warner, and I live at 749 Bill's Circle. Um, my family and I live within the 200-feet range of this proposed new transitional housing development, previously known as Reed Ranch. It will literally back up to my back fence. We are extremely opposed to this development for several reasons. I could spend my night, time tonight giving out all the statistics for multiple studies on how this transitional housing will lower the neighborhood home values, increase the crime rates, and place hardship on the already severely burdened school district. However, I'm gonna focus my time tonight on the traffic and the environmental concerns that placing this apartment complex in this particular location will create. Some of these have already been addressed with the Jessica Place, but connecting it to Blakey and the FM 969, in my opinion, is a huge mistake. This will cause the motorists to bypass the traffic lights and cut through this new transitional housing and the current Riverside Grove neighborhood, where children used to be able to ride bikes, skateboards, and play outside will now be unsafe. I don't know how to quantify the value of safety, especially when it comes to children, but it should be extremely high on this decision-making list. Also, the increased traffic on Jessica Place will accumulate onto Schaefer Boulevard and Hasler Shores, as well as throughout the entire neighborhood and Bob Bryant Park. Getting in and out of Riverside Grove is already a taxing experience during these school times, and by adding through, a through street in the neighborhood, the traffic will become unbearable. Any proposed value that this new transitional housing is supposed to bring will not outweigh the safety of the current residents. Furthermore, and just as a sa, as safety is hard to quantify, so is peace and the tranquility which comes from living in such a rural setting. Replacing the current P2 rural zone with a P4 mixed zone will be devastating to the feel of the west side of Riverside Grove and the retirement community of the settlement estates. Farm fields loaded with wildlife will be replaced with road noise and light pollution. The views of the sunset, the smell of the freshly baled hay, the glimpse of the red-tailed hawks, and the sounds of the mooing of the nearby cattle will be a thing of the past, replaced by hardscape, roads, multi-level buildings, and overwhelming upheaval of what used to reside in that recent peaceful space.
You have 30 seconds.
I understand that Bastrop is growing, and the development is, is part of that process, but I think that a more suitable location for this type of he, of development could be found, preferably not in a royal, rural, rural setting next to schools and the neighborhood full of children and families. Additionally, the rural zones of Bastrop should be protected with the same enthusiasm and fervor as the historical districts of downtown Bastrop. The character of our small town will continue to melt away if we, if we allow these developers to continually, continue to erode our countrysides. Money should not be the driving force of this progress. Rather, all the needs of the citizens should be considered, especially the ones that live right next door. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we ask that you, uh, please hold applause for this? There's gonna be a lot of comments that are gonna be had.
Yes, thank you. Uh, just wanna also point out, I'm not, just, uh, so there's no confusion, um, on the affordable and, uh, low-income housing, that, that just because, that, it's just in the document that we're not necessarily trying to have the low income. It's just a phrase for affordable to help people get in, so... Um, next on the, um, citizen comments, I have, um, LNL Ranch, LLC. They are in favor. Uh, they are, property address is 160 Settlement Drive here in Bastrop. They are in favor of item 3F. Uh, the next person I have is Mike Nema, Nebatupun? Oh, I can't really read his name correctly, but he is in, uh, he has no objection to the request. Let's see, I have Kipner and Libya Morrow. Um, they are at 750 Kayler Cove. They are opposed to the request. We do not want apartments next to the school. And that is all that I have. Got some reason?
Uh, just ask if anybody else would like to speak at this time?
Does anyone else, would anyone else like to speak at this time?
I'm Keith Alborn, uh, 201 Bryant. It's on the corner of Jessica and Bryant, and I'm definitely against this project. Traffic on Jessica now is like a NASCAR race, and you open up this, this community you say is affordable housing, and you say that maybe some of the community's gonna be living there? I don't think teachers are gonna be able to afford it. I think you mentioned it's gonna be upper apartments. I don't think that first responders can afford those types of apartments. I would be much more, if you're gonna develop it, see some sort of housing, like a subdivision, more accommodating to the community than an apartment building. Uh, we've been exposed to apartment buildings before where we came from, and it brings a lot of problems to the community. Uh, I don't know if anybody has addressed this with the schools and what it's gonna do to the classroom sizes. The optimum size for a classroom is about 25 students per classroom. Have you done a demographic... Have you done a demographic study on how many people this is going to bring to the community?
Sir, can you make sure you're talking into the microphone, please?
Well, I'm trying to get some answers to this, because I can see what's going to happen here. You're going to have all these students piling in, and then five, 10 years from now, the tax burden is going to be on us to build more schools, and they're going to be gone. You know, maybe they think that optimum size for a classroom is 25, maybe they think it's 35, I don't know. But that falls on the taxpayers. And if you have students coming in, new ones, I have a granddaughter who was recently born, she's going to be attending this school, and I don't like what I'm seeing. How much time do I have?
You have a minute 24 seconds left.
So, like I said, I live on Jessica and Bryant. It's not a safe place now for kids. I watch kids coming out of the school, they're dodging traffic. Now, if you're going to add this subdivision, you know what's going to happen? People are going to cut through, and these kids are going to be at risk. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So I would like to just say on some of that, I think for our concern is to make sure that we have housing to where those people can afford to live in. I don't want that misunderstood by any of the thoughts of the people on the dais here. We want to make sure that the citizens here in Bastrop can have an affordable place to live. We are also concerned about the well-being of the families and the neighborhoods as well. So, just want to put that out there for you.
May I just say a couple things? I first want to mention, I did reach out to the Bastrop School District and to the Neighborhood Association, but hadn't heard back, and I reached out a few times. I first want to talk about safety, because I think safety is one of our main concerns and why the entire development is developed for a slow streets type of community. When it comes to walking and biking, this will be the best infrastructure in the area by far. I just, I don't think there's a doubt about that. On the comprehensive plan, you know, I understand that this is a rural area experiencing a lot of change, but it is transitional development, which suggests that multifamily and higher-density uses are something that the city wants through that comprehensive plan process. And then lastly, I mean, if you had another application from a developer to do single-family homes here, that would be more expensive housing. So, I think those are just the points I'd like to make. I would say any of the residents who would like to keep in touch, I'm happy to offer my card. You know, we'd like to be a good neighbor, so, thank you.
I got a question for you before you leave, please. You're asking for a P4?
Yes.
Yes, density and stuff.
And the proposal, the plan now is for three-story would be the tallest height?
Three, or three-and-a-half story?
Just three-story.
Three-story, okay. Because a P4 goes for four stories, or?
Yes.
It will allow for that. So, okay, that's what I needed to know.
So it's not going to be towers?
Yep. I've got a question for the city manager, if you don't mind. Sylvia, on the road, you know, they're concerned about traffic, things like that, and as you pointed out, we're going to take the least line of resistance. From what I'm looking at, when you said earlier about improvements on 71, can you explain that? Because if I was... What I see, and what I've seen happen from my own eyes over the years that I've lived here, is with all the development on 969, in order for them to get to HEB, they literally have to come down, they go behind, you know, Lowe's, then come down the street, then go underneath the expressway, come down, go around, blah, blah, blah. You know, will settlement be a way for them to come down settlement 271 and go across at that point there? Because you're improving 71, how? Because all you can do is go up now on settlement, can you come back down and go across?
It's going to have, it'll jog. Let me see if I can get there, unless you can get there faster than I can, Rick. Back to the comparable, the two developments. So while he's bringing that up, I want to make one thing clear. Transitional housing is just a term. It means, in old zoning schemes, I mean, that's part of the problem with the B3 code, is that we use new definitions that aren't accustomed to being used in the vernacular that we have today. The normal course of zoning is you go from single-family to multifamily to commercial. That is the zoning scheme. The future land use map calls this as transitional housing, which means there's going to be a higher density there, whether that is a P4 or a P5. That's what the future land use map calls, unless this commission recommends an amendment to the future land use plan, in which case those are items we will take to council. As it stands today, that's what it is, so that's number one. Number two is, hopefully you can get that map up here, yes, there is a jog at settlement that comes up and then back down. It makes this weird, almost more than a 45-degree angle.
So you could come down?
Oh, my PowerPoint crashed, it's too big.
Okay. So, coming down from, is it Blakely, or what's the road up there, behind Lowe's?
That's Blakely.
Blakely. So come Blakely and you hit settlement, you could come all the way down settlement and get across there at the very bottom of this by 71 and get over to HEB?
You'll be able to get to Old Austin Highway, yes, and not have to come under 71, correct.
Without going all the way to Blakely and coming down and then going through Jessica and things like that?
Correct. The proposal, as it stated, between these two developments and the master transportation plan, has Blakely, which right now is only built to the Lowe's segment, has a sidewalk road planned all the way through to get past this development and then make the jog directly south to Old Austin Highway, and then that's, Old Austin Highway connects to HEB and Hasler Shores.
Correct. Okay, so that's probably the way they're going to go, all those people at 969. Would you think that?
Correct, which is why the discussion of not having the connection at Jessica Place, because you are transitioning from commercial to multifamily, to single-family, which is in the vein of zoning, which is why the connection at Jessica Place, if that went away, if the commission recommended that to go away, that wouldn't cause an issue, because there's still the connection south that's proposed at Blakely to connect to Old Austin Highway.
Got it.
And our discussion with the school, just in full transparency, we meet with the school every two weeks. We are more connected with the school today than ever before. We give them every iota of development information for their planning, so much so that we're even working with developers to exact the pieces of property, because I'm very aware of the taxpayer burden, very aware. The problem when entities don't talk is, I don't get to exact something that the school needs, and then the school has to pay high dollar for it. In the plating process, if we're able to exact public spaces, then the school gets essentially a parcel at less than market rate, and so those things help to maintain. There are, right now, whenever Rick can bring the map back up, at the Valverde subdivision that we'll see here as a mud, there are 1,600 units planned. At the Pearl River site, which is adjacent to this site, there are 16 apartment units, three stories planned. There are these apartment units planned. Behind the Buckeyes, we have a proposed subdivision development as well with multi. So, in the queue right now, there are probably more than 4,000 apartment units planned, and the demand is growing. I have five hotels in the queue, and if I did single-family platted lots, I would say we're probably approaching the range of 4,000 single-family lots that are in the queue. This population is expected to double in very short order.
You have heard someone say earlier that Jessica Place was like a Speedway. How could that be? Because doesn't it dead-end?
It does, but there's some, it's this weird, and again, I'm coming late to the party, so I'm going to armchair quarterback. It's easy for me to armchair quarterback, because I can go, why does that, that doesn't make sense? The subdivision there has sidewalks on one side, and so there's a sidewalk on Schaefer, but then it dead-ends, and then you have the school on the other side of Schaefer. Here we go, thank you. So, in this particular area, you've got some connectivity on Schaefer, but the sidewalk stops before you get to Old Austin Highway. Here's the school. So the proposal ostensibly is, as Jessica was improved, that this would also be a sidewalk. That's what the transportation plan calls for, that this is a road with a sidewalk. There is no road there right now.
Wouldn't it also, if it's opened up there, wouldn't that be an outlet for going to the west?
It would be, it would be, but folks can still also, again, if we don't make this outlet here, this outlet will also still be there. When you can come up Old Austin Highway, there's going to be a roundabout planned here, you can still come up Blakely this way.
But wouldn't it relieve a lot of the pressure off of there by the school?
The school is looking forward to Blakely being opened. As far as the school's concerned, and all of our development plans before Reed Ranch came on board, as far as the school is concerned, this connection at Blakely makes the bus drivers very, very, very happy.
Yeah.
I think whatever we decide with regards to the development, I think there are some very real concerns about opening up Jessica and hearing from the residents. Even if the development does go forward, I think taking Jessica off the table and not opening up would at least alleviate some of their concerns. So I would certainly recommend that to the board.
Yeah, I don't think Jessica needs to be opened. And to answer your question, the reason why it's such a speed zone in that little spot is because it gets so cluttered and people are in such a hurry to get in and out of there and don't have to wait.
By opening that up, you relieve a lot of that. That's my point.
Yeah, but you'd have to go there and see it.
You could cut it in half, go in that other direction. So how can you not believe, be relieved for everybody? I would assume that.
You'd have to be over there to see the amount of traffic that's there after school or in the morning.
So, the way the school stacks, the school stacks here, and so even if this outlet at Jessica wasn't there, again, the Blakely outlet is available, and this neighborhood has the potential to get out along Schaefer, back along. So, the master transportation plan, I'm going to throw my county friends under the bus here, the county and the Campo plan do have it connecting to Jessica. That has never been the city's plan, we intended to bring it all the way down to Blakely. Again, this particular development, part of our own rules say you must match all of the plans, and that was their intent, to match what the master transportation plan, the Campo and other plans approved called for.
So, I can't, just, I would like to throw this out there. It's an unfortunate thing, right, but our community is growing, and it is growing super With that, developers are having to find spots to put houses, right? It's an unfortunate thing. I'm one who grew up in Bastrop. I'm not the biggest fan of the growth, but I understand the growth. It's something that's happening. We have to try to get ahead of it, we have to try to make the right accommodations for the developers as well as the citizens. As far as certain developments, I don't, this here going, it's just a lot of clutter to me in that area, right? We have the Burleson Crossing and the new planned development on Burleson East, and then we have that, so, like, there is a lot of impact that that's going to have to the area as far as the amount of people, the amount of students at the school, the amount of traffic. Like, the traffic is crazy right now as it is, and I'm no architect, but, to me, in order to alleviate a lot of the traffic, there has to be some major construction going on in that area, and that's going to cost a lot. So, those are a few things to consider. I'm not sure how we want to move forward with this right now, but I would like to look more into it and look at some more options on how we could work out things for the developers as well as the ones in the neighborhood, because those, like, the majority of the people have been there for a while, and we don't want to make their life miserable to appease to other things.
Sure, so let me touch on one thing that the B3 code, and you had Charlie attempt to meet it. Part of what the B3 requires is that buildings be articulated really close to roads. That's why you have this setback, and the build-to lines be very small, right? The B3 code says, we got to be walkable, you should be out in your front yard, you should be all of those things. So when you build a development like this, or you try to design a development like this, and you go to build-two lines that match that, you have a building that's situated very close to the lot line. We can certainly have the discussion with the developer about moving this back, or some other development amendments that make this perhaps more palatable to the neighborhood altogether. So, I don't know, Charlie, your group is amenable to a further discussion, a table?
I would just like to check with the architect that there's enough room. I don't draw the line, so I want to make sure that I can, not making any promises I can't keep, but my initial assumption is, you know, I think we don't need to be within 10, 15 feet of the front setback, you know? We can be a little bit farther. So, I'm going to go grab the architect and just check with him, but that's something I'm also happy to discuss and work with Sylvia on as we go to council.
Well, it's not going to make a much difference if you're going three stories, whether you're five feet off, six feet off, 10 feet off, 15 feet off, you're still that high.
It does make a difference.
So it's not going to make that big a difference, I wouldn't think.
No, it does.
Sightline.
Well, we're happy to consider anything. I mean, if you think it doesn't make a difference, 25 feet and 10 feet, you know, that might matter to some people and not everybody, but we're happy to consider anything.
I just would like to state that if this developer decides not to build here based on our decisions, it could be that something else comes up that the neighbors are more unhappy with. So, I understand the concern about the apartments, but, you know, we're just, we are not going to stop the growth in the city, no matter how hard we try.
Right. So, I'm thinking that maybe we could figure out, maybe table it and come back to where we could, they can present something to where...
When you were talking, the group back here was nodding and saying yes, they liked the idea of pushing away, and now there are some people that want to speak again. Do they have to get a little forum?
It is up to the chair, if he wants to allow further discussion.
Sure, I would like to hear what the neighbors would have to say. Can we please get your name and address?
Yes, my name is Libya Morrow, and I was one of them.
Oh, you're...
Yes, I'm 750 Kayler Cove, and my home also backs to that field, and appreciate everybody listening to us. I've lived there 20 years, and I was the last of the development in that neighborhood. We understand absolutely the need for housing in the area, we understand the need for apartments. We also want a balance between the homes that we've built and the homes to be built. Three stories, to me, is excessive. Is it 627 units that are projected in a piece of land, probably a quarter or a fifth the size of the current neighborhood, and there's 450 homes there? So there will be a lot more homes than there are even in the neighborhood in a small, small section. The traffic on Old Austin Highway in the mornings is terrible. Usually, in the days in between classes, it slows down, it does not anymore. A lot of people bypass traffic on the feeder and take that road. So now even any time of day trying to leave the neighborhood, it can be challenging. You're going to add 600 homes, 600 families and people living there, working, shopping, coming downtown, it's going to make that road unusable. So we understand the need for more homes, but to consider maybe not such a highly populated area in a small section, and also with the style of homes and businesses there, there's, in that side, there's nothing that's three stories. But two stories, there's two-story homes. Can it be two-story apartments in that area? So, there's, I think, a lot more to consider for those that live, us that live there, that we live in town, that we do stuff in town, and all the movement in that section. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to say anything? No? All right, go ahead.
I did want to say, in that northeast corner, you know, Commissioner Moss, you said the height is, it wouldn't make a difference. We are willing to consider matching that scale of the neighborhood there, and so, you know, we can work with the city manager on how to best do that, but that's something that we're willing to consider.
So are you saying you would reduce the amount of residents?
No. So, if you think about what the neighborhood has desired, so if this section... No. So if you think about what the neighborhood has desired, so if this section was two-story, but he'd be allowed to go four-story here in the front that's adjacent to the highway?
Transition.
A transition zone, yes, to give the neighborhood the protection that they're desiring along this segment. Did I put words in your mouth?
No.
Yeah. Sorry, I've been doing this a long time.
Got something to say. Tableing this has been the problem with a lot of, we need to move forward, you know, with the people. We're getting good developers come to this town. We can't let it go three years before they can do something. And, you know, it costs them money. It drives the cost of housing up and things like that. So we're tabling this. I mean, we're here to make tough decisions, but, you know, we're here to make a decision.
Well, part of what I was saying is, because I wanted to, again, I saw what she was saying and the citizens, so I wanted to make sure we got it. But the ones who are here concerned, spoke what they needed to, so we can definitely move forward with this.
Okay, I would suggest then, speaking of the mic, please.
Sorry, y'all. I would suggest then that P-4B is acceptable, but with modification, and that Jessica Place be looked at again and potentially closed, and that the height of the buildings be transitioned from the neighborhood, and the height be closer to the commercial, and also push back from the B-3 setbacks into a more, a gentler-type site plan. It's not the perfect solution, but it's better. At least you don't have a wall of buildings right in your face.
Can you zoom into that real quick? So let me see if I'm understanding, so that, because we have to write the ordinance, Resin and I. So if I'm understanding you correctly, this corner that is adjacent to the residential has a maximum height limit of two stories. We will remove Jessica off of the development plan. We will potentially increase the setback here, further away from the neighborhood as well. And the southern portion of the development has, will meet the maximum height limit of four stories, no more than four stories.
Is that acceptable to the developers?
We can work with that.
You can work with that. I think y'all need to reconsider the situation. I'm just gonna tie in that in. It just did not make sense to close off any egress to anywhere at any time, anyhow. You know, if it becomes a problem, you can close it off. You can put speed bumps up. You can do all kinds of things.
The neighbors are shaking their heads.
I think it's there.
If I lived in there, I would go out that way every time. If I was going 969, or going to Lowe's, or going to Home Depot, I'm going anyplace. You're just cutting your nose off despite your face, and this is my opinion.
I think...
When you live downtown and you're landlocked.
Judah, sorry.
I think if we are going to move forward, we at least owe it to the neighbors to close off Jessica, to alleviate their concern on that. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't budge on that.
I'm with you on that, too.
I did not write down your summary.
And let me repeat that, so...
Well, let me say what I was, I was gonna make a motion, basically, to encapsulate that summary, and that we accept this as a P-4 with those modifications.
The modifications include the units adjacent to the residential be a maximum of two-story. Jessica Place outlet closed. The units at the front of the property be allowed the maximum P-4 heights, which is four stories. And the setbacks, and the setbacks along the residential be relieved of B-3 requirement.
Is that your motion?
Yes, that is my motion. Thank you. And then I had a question. Is there any benefit in any landscaping screening in that transitional section by the neighborhood? And it's just a discussion item for you all to look at.
I.e. additional trees? Additional trees here?
Oh, we've got nods back there saying yes.
Okay. Increase the landscaping and the setback.
Then I'll second that motion, if there's a motion. Do we know what the motion is?
It's a long motion.
Long, it's a long...
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we call for a roll?
Kristy Coke?
Yes.
Gary Moss?
Yes.
Ishmael Harris?
Yes.
Jida Ross?
Yes.
Ashley Henson? Oh, sorry. Patrice Parsons?
Yes.
David Barrow?
Yes.
And this, ladies and gentlemen, is a PDD.
And congratulations on our first one. And thank you all. That was great, great discussion on our part. Okay.
I lived there, too.
All right. Okay, so we need to move on to item three...
Three C?
C, yes.
What page is that?
That.
Twenty-one. Twenty-one?
Twenty-one, yes, ma'am.
Nothing yet? Nothing yet?
For three C?
Okay, commissioners, I bring you a, I bring you a very contentious item. And I'm gonna give you some back history. So the county and the city, as part of state statute, are required to enter into an agreement called a 1445. That agreement is meant to make development not so confusing when you're dealing with multiple jurisdictions. Model subdivision rules require the city and county to agree. The city and county, this is not in your backup, this is not in your backup, Commissioner Parsons. The city and county recently inked a new 1445. There had been a 1445 in existence. This is a neighborhood called West Bastrop Village. You've heard that before. It's also labeled Adleton in the marketing. So what's before you is considering action to approve Section 2 of this preliminary plat consisting of 72.446 acres out of the Nancy Blakie survey, A98, located west of Farm Road 20, within the city's statutory ETJ and the city of Bastrop, as shown in Attachment 2. What's important for you to understand is this is the statutory ETJ. Our city has a one-mile statutory ETJ. Larger cities have a five-mile statutory ETJ. The 1445 says the city and the county will work together in those areas that are ETJ. The city has no zoning regulation in the ETJ, nor do we have regulatory authority over building permits. Hence, we must rely on our county partners. This particular development is denser than what a normal county rural section development would be. This is what that preliminary plat looks like. The county has objection. The county has objection because of, notwithstanding the road segment, but we also have drainage concerns, right? The county has open bar ditches, and the city does underground drainage. Hence, because we do underground drainage, you can get many, many, many more lots than you could with open bar ditches. You can't have a cut, or otherwise your ditch isn't a ditch, it's just a little swale. As we discussed this development agreement with West Bastrop Village, the city entered into a wholesale water and wastewater agreement. This meets the city's development standards and our code and our development agreement. However, our agreement also states that the county must enjoin in that agreement. The streets in this development, according to the agreement, are proposed to be public streets. Those streets are not built to county standards. Commissioner Moit, who is representing this precinct and the county engineer, are here to speak in opposition of approving this plat. We did give the developer's attorney an opportunity to table the plat. We have received no such request. My request to the planning commission would be to please table this, because you put us in a, not us, I mean, meaning me, the city. There is a statutory time limit of when this can come back with a denial. We've done all of the things we need to do as a city. Right now, I am in the middle of the developer and the county, and I owe both a fair shake. I owe the county the opportunity to not have to maintain what they're not wanting to maintain, and that doesn't meet their standard. And so from the developer's perspective, their opportunity is to make these private streets, or agree to be annexed into the city where the city would maintain the streets. Neither one of those conversations have been fruitful at the moment, and we have all of the attorneys weighing in this week. So my request to the planning commission would be to table this item for a future meeting. And I will yield to my city attorney, whether I even have the power to request that.
Yes, you definitely do. And just adding on a little bit more information to what Sylvia explained, I have today talked with a planner with civil engineering firm, Matt, who also agrees that, you know, this can be postponed and table for a future meeting. In our discussions with both the county and the developer's attorney, there are some things that we still have to iron out. So from a legal perspective, it seems a little premature for it to be here in front of you to be approved. But we are actively all hands on deck, trying to get to a resolution for this project to continue to move forward. As Sylvia noted, there are some issues with the road maintenance. The plat before you now actually notes that this would be maintained by the city, but actually that is somewhat inconsistent with what our 1445 suggests for this project. So that is why we're currently asking for a table or postponement of this item.
So, question, Resin? So with that, I don't want to waste these gentlemen's time, but I don't also want to take away from their time. Do we need to go through this before? Or do, are we, because I mean, I'm fine with hearing, but I don't want them to go through the...
Yeah, they can make comments.
The developer's engineering.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Matt Senich. I'm senior planner at Carlson-Briganson-Dearing. We are the engineering firm of record for this project. And I just want to let y'all know that we do not have an objection at this time to tabling this item. We're in support of city's request. That's all.
I move that we table the conversation until later.
We need to.
Let them talk now. They don't really want to.
They don't want to. I'll second that motion.
So that's what I'm trying to get at, right? I don't want y'all to come up here with everything, and then we're gonna table it, and then you have to come back and repeat it twice.
No, I just want to make a comment. My name is Mark Moit, Bastrop County Commissioner, Precinct 3. I inherited this development in the census redistricting, and Commissioner Hamner had this prior. And when I asked him about the development, he stated that this was, these roads were supposed to be private from the get-go. So I don't know when all of a sudden they became public, but I just fell into this. So my concern, like Sylvia stated, is we don't have the equipment to maintain storm sewer. So that's as far as I'm gonna state. So I would please table this.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second, so. Take the roll, please.
Patrice Parsons?
Yes.
Gary Coke?
Yes.
Gary Moss?
Yes.
Ishmael Harris?
Yes.
Jida Ross?
Yes.
David Barrow?
Yes.
Kristy Coke?
Yes.
All right. I'll be united with the decision to table it. Thank you.
I have a question. Did we vote on the minutes?
No, no. So that's what I was, I was gonna get back to that. We needed to get through the other stuff first, and then I was gonna, I got you. I got you. They're right here in front of me for next.
Patrice, I keep you on point.
Hey, I appreciate it. It's been a rough night.
Imagine our week, sir.
Ah, yeah. Y'all even know. All right. So I guess we'll get back to 3A. Consider action to approve meeting minutes from July 27, 2023, planning and zoning commission meeting, committee meeting minutes.
But both a motion to accept.
I second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Okay. All right. On to item 3B. Consider action to approve a replat of the reserve tract of the Lone Star Storage Subdivision to be called the Pearl River Phase 1, being 11.129 acres, located at the northeast corner of State Highway 71 and Farm Market Road 969 within the city limits of Bastrop, presented by Kennedy.
Good evening, commissioner. It's nice to see you guys, meet you. So this is a part of Pearl River, of the Lone Star subdivision. You can see in the location map, it is located to the corner of State Highway 75 and FM 969 in the top left-hand corner of the property. And so what they're wanting to do is to do a replat to split that lot into two, and...
Yeah, I'm just getting off the side of the way.
Oh, sorry. I thought you had a question. And this is to show, like, the public improvements, as well as the road that will connect from, I believe it is Blakie, to the rest of the subdivision, the continuance of it, and then Blakie, obviously, to 969. And so this is just, this is the preliminary plat that has been previously approved. It shows, so the one that this is about is, no, we don't wanna do that. In the top left, Lot 1, it will be split into the two. That is Lot 1. And so these are the utilities that are available and proposed. You can see the green one at the bottom, that's the wastewater line. To the right, the blue, you have the water main. And then in the pink, it's very, it's very light pink on the left-hand side, you can see the proposed water line that is proposed with the extensions to serve this subdivision. And were there any questions?
Yes.
Of course.
Why are we doing this? Well, this has all been done before. What's the reason? What's the change exactly?
They're making Lot 1 into two lots. Lot 1 is going from one lot to two lots.
Two lots, okay. And the reason for that is?
Apartment construction.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions? All right. On this item, stack does recommend approval.
I propose to accept it.
Second.
Is the city recommending acceptance of this?
Yes, yeah. We also do have the applicant here, if you have any questions.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? All right. So it led us through, pass unanimous. Okay. Was I supposed to do roll on that one? No?
Yes, sir.
I was. I'm sorry. Okay, let me get the roll, please. Sorry.
If you could, can we start over so we can get the second?
Make it official. Okay.
Yes.
I propose to accept the replat.
Okay. Judah?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we take a roll?
Gary Moss?
Yes.
Jida Ross?
Yes.
Ishmael Harris?
Yes.
Patrice Parsons?
Yes.
Kristy Coke?
Yes.
And David Barrow?
Yes.
All right. On to item 3D. I got my papers mixed up, y'all. Sorry. There's too many of them. Yeah, thank you, Judah. Consider action to approve the Colony MUD 1G Section 1 preliminary plat being 184.259 acres out of the Jose Manuel Bank, abstract number 5, located west of FM 969 outside of statutory ETJ to the north.
All right. So for this one, we have the preliminary plat in front of y'all. It is for Section 1 of 1G. It's a continuation of the colony. It's the section that is at the top towards 969. And so this is the preliminary plat that they have proposed. It includes 266 residential lots, and then 220, or, sorry, 22 non-residential lots. And then 11 are mixed between lots dedicated to drainage and lots dedicated to landscape. There's a mix between those with 11. With this preliminary plat, 15 new streets are proposed. And so with drainage with this one, the runoff generated will flow towards the proposed streets captured by a curb in... captured by curb inlets and convey, the inlets will convey it directly to the proposed drainage pond in one of those dedicated drainage lots. The access will be from Republic Drive, which connects all of the colony together, and it also gives that connection to FM 969.
Is there going to be, are you saying there's an additional access to 969? Or only to Old Republic?
So Republic will connect to 969. And Republic is what connects all of the colony. Any other questions?
Can we zoom in on that a little bit?
Is this outside of the ETJ?
Yes.
All right.
Is this plan on being annexed, or? And why are we doing this?
One, it's statutory required, again, through that 1445, number one. Two, they have a municipal utility district, which we are the wholesale.
Wastewater?
Yes. And mostly for the 1445 and the plating authority.
Okay, got it. We want their waste.
Exactly.
Okay. It will be us lots of money, right?
I make a motion to approve?
A second.
We have a motion and a second? Did y'all, did you get the motion and the second, the people?
Who was the second?
Gary. These guys are on fire.
Thank you.
We're ready.
Judah Ross?
Yes.
Gary Moss?
Yes.
Ishma Harris?
Yes.
Patrice Parsons?
Yes.
Kristy Coke?
Yes.
David Barrow?
Yes.
All right. We have a unanimous vote. So on to item 3E. Hold a public hearing and consider action or recommendation for Burleson Crossing East zoning concept scheme, changing for 19.81 acres out of the Nancy Blake survey from P5 Core to a planned development district with a P5 Core-based zoning, as shown in attached, as Attachment 2, located at the northeast corner of State Highway 71 and Edward Burleson Drive, within the city limits of Bastrop. Sylvia?
Okay, so I was planning to show you the planned development district process, but you felt it in detail earlier today. Again, you, mandatory master plan has to comply with a comprehensive plan. That is what you guys are looking at tonight. You punt it to staff, we get an engineered site plan, and then we begin working on any further development standards. For example, if the drainage detention pond needs to be bigger or smaller, et cetera. So Burleson East, south of Blakie, north of 71, east of Ed Burleson, and west of Jessica. This is the zoning concept plan that was previously approved through the development agreement. And really, what the PDD is intending to do tonight is, you guys approved a scheme with 25 warrants. You and the council approved a scheme with 25 warrants. My goal is that we clean it up. And there's a few things that need to happen within this development that we need to consider. The first one is improvements to Ed Burleson. It's not wide enough, it needs to be widened. That will fall on the developer under this concept scheme. Additional are improvements to 71, a turning lane off of 71 that gets traffic off of the stacking queue that happens today. And then the biggest thing is this road and the detention pond. So the road, very much like the development before, will look like a public road, act like a public road, be built to public road standards, have landscaping, have a sidewalk, but be privately maintained. The detention pond is on its own lot and block as well as part of the roadway with a permanent easement there, such as the other development that would never allow closure. And it continues to move traffic. There is, excuse me, there is a sidewalk planned along this section of roadway, which is also known as Wagon Wheel, and it connects to Wagon Wheel next to Settlement Drive. And Wagon Wheel continues into Reed Ranch with sidewalks. Would you please pull up the development that has them side by side again, the development scheme? Couple of issues I need to draw to your attention, which is why we're at PDD, PDD, as opposed to asking for additional amendments to warrants. In the original, can you zoom into this little, this section right here? Okay, great. So in the, in the prior development, Blakie is meant to cut across. There's no way Blakie can cut across. There is a daycare here, and then this is a separate property owner. Blakie has to jog across in order to come around. There was right-of-way that was exacted here that we have agreed could be right-of-way reserve, i.e., if we ever buy out the daycare and get this property owner to agree, Blakie may come straight ahead. We know that we need additional right-of-way on Blakie. We know that we need to bring water from the Bob Bryant to all the way down to the Valverde subdivision, which is off to the west, that you can't see. So we know we're going to need additional to Blakie. So we've changed this from a complete exaction of Blakie to reserve, meaning if the city doesn't use it within a period of three years, or if we haven't amended our transportation plan, the developer gets it back. It's dedicated until such time as we don't have any other option, and then we're either building or we're giving it back. The other thing that's super critical about this is that connectivity, is the commission and the council were very clear about the roadways within the development itself being connectable and accessible paths. What the commission approved before did have sidewalks, did have the look and feel of Mirror of Burleson West. And so there are some improvements along this roadway that make it feel like an esplanade as you connect all of these developments. There are sidewalks that are missing within the settlement subdivision that we'll have to make connection points to. It has sidewalks halfway across it, but it doesn't have sidewalks all the way through it. So if we were to create a good connectivity point, Blakie is meant to have sidewalks along it. So ostensibly, folks can come from 969, come down Blakie, make the jog, turn down Wagon Wheel, come across, turn down Settlement, come across, and then connect at this lower portion of Blakie, down through Old Austin Highway, and back to the old Iron Bridge. So we heard you in that regard. Tech Dot is making improvements, again, along 71 for a, what I consider a hike and bike trail, which is a widened sidewalk. And that has to be incorporated within the development as well. And so as opposed to coming to you with amendments to the 25 warrants, I thought it was easier to clean it up as a planned development district and show the changes and the modifications that are going to be required to make this development viable for both the city and the developer. The city's recommendation is to approve it as presented.
One, I think the developer has been very patient. And two, I'd like to make a motion that we approve 3E as written.
A second.
We have a motion and a second? Can we call the roll?
Any discussion?
Yeah, is there any discussion? I don't, I don't, I know for me, I'm happy to be here at this point, right? We took them through all of this, and it would be highly unfair and kind of crappy to take them through it again, so. Yeah, let's, let's move forward.
Kristy Coke?
Yes.
Gary Moss?
Yes.
Ishma Harris?
Yes.
Judah Ross?
Yes.
Patrice Parsons?
Yes.
David Barrow?
Yes.
We have the developer, would you like to say anything? No, just thank you, all right. You can go dance.
So you'll see the preliminary plat at your next meeting. Don't get too excited. We, we, we got to make the water work. That's a kidding, we're, we're there.
All right.
Sorry, those, I felt those daggers right there.
No, no.
Well, I mean, but, and again, this is your second PDD in, you know, five hours, or however long you've been here. There are, there are considerations that have to happen. I mean, the developer has to intend to meet the master plans. You've got to be able to drain, you've got to be able to move the traffic, you got to be able to have water and wastewater connections. It's important. Blakie is an important connection at this point, but the exaction that we took from the original development isn't going to make sense because I don't want to stand before you or council and say that I'm going to take down a daycare center. I mean, that's not, I, I'd be tar and feathered in my own neighborhood walking through there. So the reality is, we know we need to make a jog. We know we need additional right-of-way at Blakie, so. Okay, 4A.
Item 4A, future development-related items.
Development code, public hearings. I don't have a schedule for you. I promised council a schedule at the second hearing in September. Steph and I continue to work through what would be the most methodical and also comprehensible, if that's even a word, comprehensive, easy-to-understand process to get through the code. I believe we've given immediate relief through the non-conforming, and we've given immediate relief through the PDD. The rest of it, we will work through, so.
Did you have a chance to ask Connie if she'd be willing to come and talk about the code?
I did. I think who's going to come first is the current mayor.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, he reminded me he was here. So, yes. We also have a new gadget in the back that I think is going to make conversation very, very, very easy as we talk through. It is a smart screen, you can draw on it. We can talk through where connection points should happen. We can talk through where sidewalks need to happen. We can talk about those multimodal places where they need to happen, and you can see it on the screen and how it makes sense from a 50,000-foot level, so. Okay. And for, any questions on that?
No.
4B?
4B?
Oh, where's the update?
Sorry, yeah. No, we don't have the monthly value report?
I swear we have a report, but we will have to email it to you under separate cover.
We only, we did 4A, now we're on 4B?
Which is the volume report, but as you can see on the slide, the volume report is blank.
Future development plans.
So we will have to email that under separate cover. I was for sure that it was uploaded today. I apologize for that.
Hey, looks like we're moving right ahead in the city. All right, so we have, we're on the item 4C.
Well, it's odd because it's in mine, but it's not showing up on your, on your PowerPoint. So you're right, the PowerPoint crashed. So I will tell you that we did, oh, goodness gracious. You don't, you don't have it. It's in my, I printed my segment of the PowerPoint. We had 83 applications on the building permit side through multiple phases, and then we had 25 on the planning side. Those 25 are the laborious ones. They're the ones that take weeks and weeks and weeks. So that's still a heavy, that's still a heavy workload. But we will get this information to you via email under separate cover.
All right, on the item 4C, I believe Pete has something she wants to give us.
Yes, ma'am. The articles are related to... Okay. B3 code as published? Okay, okay.
What is the source of this, the first one? Just curious where it's from.
I'm sorry, is it not in here?
Not on the...
Okay. Is this something, are you giving us homework, Pete?
I'm just giving just a few more readings, some history.
Okay. All right, do we have anything? I appreciate that. Here, there are extras right here.
We're at individual requests.
Okay, so individual requests for planning and zoning commissioners of particular items we list on our future agendas, no group discussion? No, we don't have anything?
I have a question for the city manager.
Yes, sir.
I know when there was big changes at the permit departments and things like that, I know there was a lot of permits that were open. Has that been all cleaned up, pretty much?
I'm sorry, I missed half of that question.
I was trying to do it tactfully, but I guess it's a situation, we got rid of all the people that didn't do right. They cleaned up all the messes that were left on the backlog.
The backlog?
Is that what you're referring to?
Is it, is it, is it cleaned up? No. We...
Making progress?
We are, we are making progress, but I make... I make scary progress. For example, what's scary to me. So for example, there's a litany of permits out there for new single-family residential homes that were built within three years who don't have a mechanical final. Mechanical is your HVAC stuff. The house is already occupied, they're living in it. Ostensibly, we should just go in and final the mechanical, right? But if it's not a properly sized AC unit, and they're having mold issues, and they're having... And so it's, it's an effort to go through some of that and go and make and schedule those appointments. Sometimes the property owner says, nope, everything's fine, it's great, it's working. That's, that's kind of an easy final. But we attempt to make contact, and I can tell you, I have a lot of those.
Is there anything the commission can do to help?
No, thank you for the support. It's, we just, it's just one of those things we have to go through. And then the, the department reorganization, not just the department, but the city reorganization continues so that we take down walls. There is an updated org chart that has all of our engineering situated under one person so that, you know, wastewater can talk to water, and they can talk to the drainage, and they can talk to our third parties without being siloed. And that, you know, for example, I have a 10-inch line that has capacity, and I don't have four developments tying into that because the right didn't tell the left. So we continue to make positive progress.
Only hear good things, by the way.
Thanks, that's, that's, that's good. We're, we're, we've ramped up our customer service. These ladies, these ladies make it happen. Kennedy's, we stole her from Austin. She was brand spanking New Penny in Austin, and so they're positive. It's a, it's a great can-do attitude.
I've enjoyed it.
All right.
I would just like to say that I think the way we worked together tonight with the, with B3 code and the PDD, I think, worked really well. I think it's encouraging that we might not have to completely dismantle the B3 code. So I think this PDD thing is good.
It gives, I think, some really needed outlets, like the Reed Ranch, who attempted to, to meet it. It, it made sense to be able to move things, and if you had done that under a neighborhood regulating plan, let's say, that was approved, you're married to that. We wouldn't have been able to have the discussion today that we did without coming out with 27 warrants, or 25, or however many, so, yes, thank you.
And I want to add to that, just commending the commission for your engagement, your patience, and, you know, yielding to the citizens and actually hearing them. That's, that's the whole intent. And being able to be hands-on with that, I think that gives you all more power and to feel as though you've really put your thumbprint on this. So kudos to you guys for, for tonight's efforts.
That's right.
There's the activity report, voila.
I move that we adjourn.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All in favor? All opposed? Thank y'all, have a good night.
Thank you.